...
And to help raise funds for research and family support. According to the ACCO, 15,780 children under the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer every year in the United States. Approximately 20% of them will not survive the disease. Diagnosis turns the lives of the entire family upside down. ACCO offers support, information, and advocacy through their community of families, survivors, and friends affected by childhood and adolescent cancer. They are dedicated to improving the lives of children and families living with childhood cancer and engage in this life-altering struggle. FCPS students being treated for childhood cancer participate in homebound instruction while they are undergoing treatment or recuperating. We are joined tonight by Jay Cokely, who is in his 40th year of teaching for Fairfax County Public Schools. Jay retired from FCPS after 30 years of teaching physical education and returned as a part-time physical education teacher at Woodburn Elementary School. It was at Woodburn where Jay met a little girl named Ellie, who had been diagnosed with acute lymphoblastate leukemia in the spring of 2013. By the time she entered kindergarten that fall, Ellie had lost most of her hair and was wearing hats to school every day. Jay noticed her affinity for fun and cheery hats and organized a hat drive to provide Ellie with a broader selection of hats, and Ellie's Hats was born. Now, thanks to the hard work of the individuals who, like Jay, took an interest in Ellie and her hats, thousands of kids across the country who are battling cancer have received new hats and so much more. Ellie's Hats was much more, I'm sorry, Ellie's Hats does much more than send hats to children with cancer. They've helped to provide financial assistance to local families who have children with cancer. They recently reached a milestone of $300,000 in donations to families and hospitals. Ellie is now in the ninth grade and will be celebrating her 14th birthday this year. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to encourage everyone to visit the website for Ellie's Hats at ellieshats.org and the American Childhood Cancer Organization at ACCO.org to learn how you can help. I would now like to invite Jay Cokely and supporters of this recognition to join the Board at the Dais for Photo. While that's happening, I do want to share one quick connection to this. When I was a principal in Loudoun County, my counselors put together an Ellie's Hats Drive, and this was 2015. And I remember this drive brought Ellie to our school to collect the donations. So this is just a wonderful way to connect what's been happening here in Fairfax County with what has happened elsewhere in other jurisdictions around Virginia. So thank you, Jay, for all of your work.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School Board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as a capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students are not permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school officials. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's non-discrimination policy. All statements should be directed to the School Board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. As a reminder, speaker substitutions are not permitted. A speaker may not yield their time to another individual before or during their remarks. Shouting and outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. We are grateful for those who have come to speak to us today, and thank you for your cooperation.
Our first speaker is Mira Avayyar. Our next speaker is Jeanette Korsilius.
Greetings. My name is Jeanette Korsilius, and I am a music educator and alum of FCPS. I am a member of FBA, speaking as an individual. As Labor Day weekend is upon us, I wonder as to why this School Board still hasn't passed a meaningful collective bargaining resolution yet. The ban was lifted 16 months ago. This Board has been delaying and kicking the can down the road for far too long. We are not begging or pleading. We are demanding that you pass a meaningful resolution and hold the hearing as soon as possible. Educators love what we do, but love doesn't pay the bills. Every day I watch my fellow educators perform heroic and Herculean tasks, and yet, we are paid 20% less than other college-educated peers. Virginia's educators are some of the lowest paid in the profession because politicians value business interests over workers' rights. But I am seeing school districts like Richmond take ownership in changing the culture. RPS starting teachers' salaries the same as FCPS now, and they gave new teachers an $8,000 bonus. They passed a resolution in December of 2021, and 90% of the units voted in favor of the union. They are in the midst of contract negotiations. Arlington passed their resolution in May. We are tired of waiting, and we are sure that educators will leave to the surrounding jurisdictions that pass resolutions. 71% of Americans are in favor of unions, the highest in six decades. Face it, unions are popular. In a time of greed, corruption, and hoarding of wealth, choose to be different. Dare to be different. Value public education and our workers. We need collective bargaining now.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen McCullough. Stephen McCullough. Our next speaker is Shawna Yashar.
I'm here on behalf of the Fairfax County Parents Association to renew our request that every FCPS employee that has one-on-one contact with children complete annual criminal background checks. It was a mere 10 years ago that USA Swimming banned Coach Rick Curl, who ran the largest swim club in the area, for child sex abuse. He was convicted and sentenced to seven years in prison. Afterwards, USA Swimming instituted safe sport protocols that include monthly background checks. Monthly. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, youth groups, local youth sports programs all require a minimum of an annual criminal background check. The cost to do this is between $8 to $10. I had two conducted in the last month for the volunteer activities that I do alone. Yet, FCPS sits back hiding behind the state regulation that only requires background checks be conducted upon hiring. That's pure negligence. This past winter, in opposition to Senate Bill 739, which is now law, which requires in-person school five days a week and a parental opt-out from asking, this Board repeatedly argued to the press, in court papers, and even went down to Richmond and to the General Assembly, that they needed to have local control. Here's your chance to prove that you know what to do when you have local control. Make criminal background checks an annual requirement. Don't make parents seek help from Richmond once again. Our children's safety necessitates that FCPS put basic safeguards in place to ensure that convicted pedophiles, like the Glasgow counselor, don't slip through the cracks again. You have nearly $3.5 billion in your budget. Use it for this basic safety check and stop waiting for others to force you to act.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Hines.
All right. Good evening. Thank you very much, School Board members, Dr. Reed, and leadership staff. It's nice to see you again on this side of the dais, I won't lie about that. I am Pat Hines, former School Board member, current teacher in another county, and I continue to be a community advocate for racial and social justice in our school system. My connection to tonight's agenda, which I thought I was going to have to do, is the Challenge Materials Review Committee. That's an example of the Board doing its work to accommodate individual requests without compromising fundamental community values, and that's really the theme of where I'm going tonight. When I left the School Board, we had some unfinished work. I know that you all know that because you have finished a lot of it. Thank you. And I, for myself, I continue to work in with community advocates on racial and social justice issues, and one of the groups that I work with is FAM, Free and Anti-Racist Minds. Stephen McCullough was supposed to speak before me. He didn't get notice that he had a speaking slot tonight for some reason that he missed that. So, anyway, Free and Anti-Racist Minds, FAM, is a group of current, former, current and former teachers, students, and parents, many of them are or have been equity leads in the buildings. They are serious about the work. I joined them because when I was on the School Board, I was impressed with their advocacy and their commitment and their knowledge of the system. When, Quailey Zukary will come up in a little bit to talk a little bit about FAM's current advocacy. We have a campaign for truth in education. You will hear more about it. What I can say tonight about that is that teachers need clarity and support in doing this work. Students deserve the truth in school, taught in a respectful, age-appropriate way but holding nothing back. And this community expects you to represent their values by leading this important work. You guys got started on it. The anti-racist policy was going strong a couple of years ago, but it seems to have fallen off. Please rely on your community advocates and your community partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shelley Arnoldi.
Hi, my name is Shelley Arnoldi. I'm a parent of fourth West Potomac High School. I'm here to ask you to stop wasting our taxpayers' money on things that are hurting our children and dividing our communities. I would like you to focus on education, reading, writing, and math. I'm here to ask you to eliminate divisive policies, training, and curriculum promoting anti-racism, anti-bias, and diversity or equity. Cancel the $2.4 million contract with Panoramic Education for social-emotional learning screening. There's a conflict of interest with the contractor, and it's a very divisive contract. I would like you to start teaching children what they have in common with each other, focus on individual liberty, self-reliance, and human dignity. Discipline children based on behaviors, not skin color. Equality, not equity. I'm here to ask you to cancel the policies regarding COVID. It's a complete waste of money. Fairfax County has all the data. They've had zero deaths, 85 hospitalizations of school-aged children. There's no effect. Please stop recommending vaccines, quarantines, or tests. Your recommendations for kids to get vaccines have done more harm than good. Stop promoting masks. They do nothing to reduce transmission. Cancel policies involving gender identity. Prebupescent children do not care about sex and do not need to be questioning their genders. You're making it harder for kids to learn English. America has become very accepting of the gay community, and there is no reason to push the concept on these children. You're making children doubt their gender and sexual orientation and confusing them. Allowing kids to use bathrooms and locker rooms based on their preferred gender is going to create a lot of chaos. Focus on awareness and the dangers of antipsychotic, antidepressants, anti-anxiety medications, SSRIs. Most school shootings are caused by children that are on them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jenna White.
Good evening. I'm the Returning Vice President of Communications for the Fairfax County Council PTA. I'm also a longtime member of the Trauma Informed Community Network in Fairfax and one of 60 local adverse childhood experiences or ACE interface presenters. As local leaders in our schools and communities, PTA members are ready to work jointly with the School Board, FCPS, and other community groups that share our values and goals. Community groups that share our values and goals in recovering from the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Last summer, I attended the National PTA Conference, where a U.S. Navy SEAL from Florida spoke about his frantic work to get an Afghanistan family evacuated and settled in the U.S. He told us, "I did what any good Navy SEAL does. I called in the local PTA." PTA members are local families, teachers, students, staff, and community members. Collaborating locally, statewide, and nationally, the millions of PTA members work for every child to fulfill their potential through public education. Today, we all got data from the NAEP outlining the impact of COVID. Data also comes out regularly detailing challenges to the mental wellness of students and staff. We have these and many other concerns, and our focus is on the hard work to engage around solutions. Fairfax County has over 170 active local PTAs, which means we have 170 local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations to run by local volunteer leaders. The FCC PTA will continue to invest their time and their voice to engage alongside these local units for positive change in public education as partners. Like that Navy SEAL, as a community, we have a tremendous amount of work to do in a short window of time. We are surrounded by complex and challenging circumstances. We are committed to the day-in, day-out hard work required by partners. Thank you for your service as elected officials, and happy new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Burke.
Good evening. This is an education bill of rights proposed by For Public Education, and you should all have a copy. A free, high-quality public education is a key pillar of democracy and a right established under the Virginia Constitution. A public education is also one pathway to our aspiration of a just and equitable culture and country, in which each child has the opportunity to explore and to excel to the best of their ability and desire. In pursuit of the right of an exceptional education, children have the right to learn in a safe, inviting, and nurturing environment, free from prejudice, bias, bullying, harassment, shame, or extreme forms of discipline, and to be challenged with materials, guidance, and learning opportunities that will stimulate and satisfy their intellectual curiosity, build their critical thinking skills, and equip each student with the education needed to prosper as a productive member of society. And parents have a right to engage in the experience with transparency, including the opportunity to comment on education programs and materials and volunteer in and outside the classroom as appropriate, and with respect for all students, teachers, administrators, and the school system. And teachers and staff have the right to work in an environment that is respectful, is free from harassment, values their training and professional experience, allows for individual creativity, and provides them with the resources, support, and the time needed to provide an exceptional education opportunity for each child. And the community has a right to engage with the school system as appropriate to ensure that the policies and programs accurately reflect general and evolving community standards for the classroom that have been determined to be the most beneficial to the education of students, particularly those that relate to literature, science, and social studies. Also, the universal agreement is not a standard for a robust educational experience. In fact, unconventional, evolving...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Zukary.
Peace. Good evening to the Board, administration, and the community. My name's Quailey Zukary, and I'm here today on behalf of Free and Anti-Racist Minds, or FAM, a local organization that advocates for anti-racism and which is deeply concerned with the state of education in this county. I'm here today to call for truth in education, a genuine truth. Since the U.S. educational system's inception, historical lies, and racism, both intentional and systematic, have been infused into and across curriculum. The nature of that racism and deception has evolved over the last century, becoming more subtle, but no less detrimental to the minds of all American youths. It now often exists as overarching racist narratives, which are still prevalent in FCPS curriculum. I witnessed this as an FCPS student from K through 12, and I continue to witness it as an FCPS parent. I applaud the Board and the Curriculum Department for implementing equity and cultural relevance initiatives during the past few years, albeit they've been small and limited. We insist that you now advance a larger effort to make substantial and expeditious change within a defined timeframe, as well as have the courage to include substantive anti-racist reform. So we call for three things. Increase and expand the current curricular cultural relevance reform efforts. Implement anti-racist curricular reform across all subject matter, along with accompanying professional development. Anti-racism is confronting and rooting out racism unapologetically and courageously. Facing a true and authentic history of this nation is not easy and may make some uncomfortable, yet it's necessary if we as a community and broader society can heal collectively. And third, there's one substantial thing you can do right now. Declare your support for teachers who incorporate these values, cultural relevance, and anti-racism into their classrooms, or maybe they want to but are afraid. Tell them you have their back. May FCPS be at the forefront of justice within a local and national social and political climate that begs for it, instead of falling behind what this generation demands.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Mallard.
Good evening. There are many FCPS issues creating alarm for parents, students, taxpayers, community members, as well as dedicated teachers and administrators. Most issues deal with parental regarding authority and notification related to their children's health and well-being. I compiled a list of some worrisome issues and included questions and asked Bev Madeja, if she will get back to me, with your answers. Possible misuse of ESSA funds. Every student succeeds ACT Title I programs. There is very clear language which indicates the implementation of programs, activities, procedures, and the engagement of parents and family members of Title I students. Are you able to prove that you're not misusing ESSA funds by failing to notify parents if a child is confused about gender identity? Family life education issues, number two. A note from FCPS for teachers in Grade 5, Human Growth and Development, the quote-unquote "the reproductive system," says that the lesson is intended for students whose sex assigned at birth is male. There's also a lesson for students whose sex assigned at birth is female. However, students may choose which lesson they take based on their gender identity. Teachers and counselors are encouraged to work with students to decide which lesson is best suited for them. Parents are not mentioned. Please clarify if students are allowed to choose the lesson they take based on their gender preference, and if parents are notified of their sex ID decisions, if not the same as assigned at birth. FCPS Resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month, that's number three. Follow-up: How many students have never returned to FCPS, and how many have never been accounted for, meaning they haven't returned, and why not? We understand the most vulnerable are Hispanic children. I will provide Ms. Beverly Madeja with my contact information, along with any relevant materials after...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Walsh.
LGBTQ academic circles used John Money's idea that gender is neutral at birth and can be switched. They failed to mention the most important point in his experiment was that as adults, both David and Brian Reimer took their lives because of what they endured in the name of science. The boys were born as Bruce and Brian Reimer. Bruce had a botched circumcision. Bruce's parents raised him as Brenda. Brenda wore pretty dresses, was introduced to traditional feminine roles. Brenda was also given hormones and bottom surgery to transition to female. Money's science was that Brenda and Brian had to perform sex acts on each other and watch porn. Brenda rejected this experiment as female. Brenda decided to become male, and Brenda became David. Please stop calling trans surgeries "life-saving." It did not save their lives. Gender fluidity ended it. A gun and an overdose were simply a means to an end to stop spending time with a pedophile. Their deaths were because of gender fluidity and what they were forced to endure. Years later, David shot himself, and Brian overdosed on drugs. Excuse me. Rest in peace, Brian and David Reimer.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Hazard. Holly Hazard. Our next speaker is David Walrod.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the School Board. Thank you for giving me a couple minutes to speak today. First of all, I want to thank you for your continued support of the LGBTQ plus community, especially our students. Members of the LGBTQ plus community come out at their own pace and at their own readiness. For many in the community, coming out to their family is a treasured memory, an opportunity to grow closer, a beacon of support. For others, being open about who they are is led to being condemned and turned away. This phenomenon is the reason that 40% of the population of youth experiencing homelessness identifies LGBTQ plus, and why the suicide consideration and temp rate among LGBTQ plus youth is twice the number of straight teens. It should be a student's choice as to when and how they come out to anybody, including their families. As educators, our job is to provide a safe learning environment for all of our students, including students who are LGBTQ plus. Fear-mongering and hate should never get in the way of standing up for folks who are marginalized. I also just want to remind this Board that in February 2020, each of you expressed your support for collective bargaining for your staff, and it is my hope that moving forward, that you will continue to show that same support through your staff members. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margaret Summers. Our next speaker is George Becerra. And our final speaker would be Corey Haynes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.02, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Reed.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer. I want to say we're on the ninth day of school, so we've had a great nine days so far. I did spend the first day of school visiting six schools, and one in each region, and was able to see firsthand the excitement, beginning at 6:30 in the morning at Lake Braddock with our marching band and dance team and chair, and just a lot of excitement about school beginning again. And I think there's nothing like being in a school on the very first day. The promise is amazing, a very joyful time. I'd like to give a special shout-out to our custodians in all of our buildings and our maintenance staff. I was in schools again this morning, and our schools look fabulous. And our grounds folks that have been out taking care of the weed whacking and leaf blowing, and there are leaves dropping already, and just mowing, and the schools look really nice right now. And I think one of the things that is so important about this county is everyone in each of their roles seems to care just a little more, and that makes a difference. Our students and our families and staff, I know, appreciate that. I'd also like to congratulate our transportation team. Our transportation team, really, even as they're still understaffed, they did manage, and I'm proud to share that they were able to have 97% of their runs on time on the first day of school, and that right there is amazing. We actually have 5,764 runs a day with a fleet that's almost the same size as the Greyhound bus lines. So to have 97% of those routes on time on the first day of school while they're still finishing routing, a big shout-out to Transportation Director Francine Furby and her team. And I did have a chance to tour the, oh dear, what is the Stone Hedge? No, Stonecroft, sorry. Stonecroft Transportation Area, and got to see some of our new electric buses. Sorry, I was on the wrong continent, wasn't I? Anyhow, that was an early morning. Anyhow, that was an early morning. Wanted to share a special kudos to our music department at Cooper Middle School. They recorded music that NASA is going to be including with the Artemis rocket launch this coming weekend, and that's pretty amazing that Fairfax County music is going to go to the moon, right? You know, it just really talks about the value of the arts, right? The arts that blend with our science and engineering and mathematics. So this began in May last year, and they worked hard over the summer. So I just want to say that learning happens in and outside our classrooms, and our learning spaces are just fabulous. I've had a chance to engage with stakeholder groups. As you know, I've scheduled 25 pyramid meetings and community conversations, and I think I've done five of those so far, and it's just been really enjoyable. Had a chance to also be present for the Robinson and South Lakes football game last Friday night, and that was a great deal of fun. In particular, I mean, the football was fabulous, but the halftime with our dance team and marching band and cheer squad, there are just so many people that make those events a success. And just really grateful also for our athletic staffs. So tomorrow, as I put out my weekly reflections, I think we're going to have, for the first time, our enrollment demographics by region that we're putting out and staffing, so that folks can, both our staff internal and external, can see our staffing in real time. So at this point, I would say the last thing I want to do is congratulate our Department of Financial Services. I know Lee Burden's here this evening, and we are talking about year-end, and I want to note that the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, the GFOA, has awarded Fairfax County Public Schools a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending 2021. So this is, this is pretty exceptional, honestly, and I'll continue this, to say that this Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and Fairfax County has earned this recognition 27 years in a row. That's pretty amazing, quite honest. That's a history of excellence. So, there you have it. That's what matters at the moment, so.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda Item 3.03, Student Representative Matters, I call on Ms. Togby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Happy new school year. We finally made it to the '22-'23 school year, which I certainly think will be a memorable one. I want to shout out all the students who have reached out to me and spoken with me. You all are incredibly inspiring, and the true forces inside of all of our buildings. I also want to thank all of our amazing staff members across the county. Together, I know that you all will make this school year one of growth and achievement for all. After the long weekend, we will be approaching the third week of school, with today marking the end of Week Two. I think we can safely say that students are starting to get in the groove of things again with the addition of new policies and such. As of last week, the Student Rep FCPS Instagram account launched, and I am super grateful to be using that platform to not only communicate but engage students, engage with students. I actually have already started. I did a FCPS Student Rep takeover today, where students got to see a day in the life, which was really fun, and I had the pleasure of attending the Oakton Cougar kickoff today, where I met with many students and was made an honorary member of many of their clubs, which was a very thrilling experience for me. Since our last meeting, I've gotten to meet with many board members to discuss my thoughts and ideas for the upcoming school year. Each meeting so far has left me feeling more inspired and excited for this year. One big topic that I've been able to cover is the fact that not many students know that there is even a position of student represent, being student representative, and many don't even know who the members of our school board are. And sure enough, that stems from being a civic education issue. So a large part of my use of the social media platform will be to educate and inform them, not just about the board, but opportunities from attending community events with me to speaking at board meetings. And since our last meeting, I've attended events such as the Equity Symposium, Leadership Kickoff, and Great Beginnings. All of these events have been fantastic, memorable experiences, and most have allowed me to speak on student voice and the importance of it. So to wrap up, I just want to say that I have a lot of excitement for all the partnerships going on, and I cannot wait to see what we accomplish this year.
Wonderful. Thank you. You've clearly hit the ground running, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Agenda Item Four, Action Items, Agenda Item 4.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. I call on Dr. Anderson for a motion.
I move that a recommendation to revoke the Virginia Teaching License of the teacher identified in closed meeting be forwarded to the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Omesh, all those in favor? That is Ms. Kees Gamarra, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Bukarski, and myself, and Ms. McLaughlin and myself, with Ms. Maron away from the table. That motion passes. I call on Ms. Bukarski for a motion.
I move to expel a student who was in possession of a statutory weapon on school property and was under the influence of a controlled substance while on school property.
Is there a second? Mr. Frisch, all those in favor? Again, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omesh, Ms. Kees Gamarra, and myself, with Ms. Maron away from the table. That motion passes. Agenda Item 4.02, Fiscal Year Year-End Budget Review, I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the revenue and expenditure adjustments as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Ms. Tolan? Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. I will ask for a point of privilege in my remarks as the outgoing budget chair, to be able to review the last year's activities and provide brief comments on the unprecedented nature of the amount available with this year's year-end motion. I remind my colleagues that budgeting is both an art and a science, as we make projections for enrollment, employment, and operations. After a difficult period of time, this year's budget has been good news on a number of fronts, with increased funding from the state, continuation of ESER funds, and continued collaboration with the Board of Supervisors. That resulted in full funding for the budget adopted in May. During the course of the last year, with this motion for, coupled with this motion for expenditure of year-end funds, we were able to address outstanding, I apologize, I pushed the down button too far. We were able to address outstanding follow-on motion funding from motions taken since 2017, with the exception of middle school start times, which we will begin to address with this year-end motion. We adopted the very first school board budget resolution identifying fiscal year '23 budget priorities, reflecting the input of all of our board members. The resolution early in the budget process allowed the Board of Supervisors, the Superintendent, and the County Executive to dialogue early on about the needs of our system. And as you know, a priority for this board was to address the critical needs of the school system as we navigated out of COVID. Priorities include mitigating and remediating the impact of COVID-19 on our students. Academic achievement, learning loss, and achievement gaps. Investments in literacy and the science of reading, as well as investments in school counselors, nurses, psychologists, behavioral interventionists, assistant principals, special education leads in elementary schools, and the recruitment and retention of world-class educators, including compensation, professional development, and planning time and environmental sustainability. In response to the bus driver and substitute shortages, we were able to also increase out-of-cycle raises for both of these employment categories. Additionally, changes were made to ensure that we were amongst the top of the WABE market for bus drivers with the annual budget. The school board reached consensus on additional priorities for year-end funding in the follow-on motion to the budget adoption for the year-end review, which was presented as new business on July 14. Typically, we would have adopted this motion at the end of July. However, with the changes to the school board calendar, this date was moved to our first board meeting of the school year, thus tonight. Although the amount which is similar to last year's end is higher than earlier years, it is due to a number of factors tied to the pandemic. These include, but are not limited to, the impact of the Great Resignation and our ability to fill positions throughout the system, including substitutes. A lower cost of benefits as a result of the one-month health benefit premium holiday, and people postponing services, as well as lower student enrollment numbers. As a reminder, year-end funds are non-recurring funds, and thus, a best practice is not to build these funds into recurring costs, such as salaries. The motion tonight includes funding for security enhancements, security vestibules, interior lock replacements, and the security audit. Bathroom upgrades to older facilities, and is a match to the Board of Supervisors' funding for bathroom facilities on our ball fields. Major maintenance backlog investments, Title IX improvements to our softball fields, outdoor classrooms and pre-K play spaces, as well as sensory rooms. Young scholars enrichment materials, studies for middle schools, a study for middle school start times, and an independent audit of our school's security. It also allot monies for bonuses in line with the state budget for the SOQ positions, while extending it to include all teaching staff, as well as operational staff and contracted hourly staff. A separate line item allows for incentives for our substitutes. The year-end also replenishes the staffing reserve by 190 positions, which is essential because we have exceeded the budgeted slots of 310 by 40. Thus, there will be 150 positions in reserve to address growth and other systems' needs. Funds are also being provided to cover ACE funding, driven by increased cost and lower enrollment as we emerge from COVID. Additional funds are allocated to address expected inflation in fuel, energy, and paper, which, as well as addressing everyone's wishes that we were excited about the progress that we will make in one key area, which includes the security audit and electric buses. I hope that my colleagues will support this motion tonight. And finally, I would like to thank Assistant Superintendent Lee Burden, Budget Director Alice Wiggington, and my Vice Chair Elaine Tolan for the great teamwork over the past year. I am confident that you all will do incredible things in the next year. It has been an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Tolan, did you speak to your second?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you for that comprehensive review of our year and what we're voting on tonight. I just wanted to add some additional comments to highlight some of the end-of-year plans that we have. I think it's very important to note that a number of the things that we have in this budget are things that we don't really have a choice about whether we want to fund them or not. So first on that list, I would put this staffing reserve. And I have to say, just being out at back-to-school nights across Dreamsville, we have so many classes sitting, you know, right on the edge, and, you know, what I'm hearing from principals is they're seeing additional families coming in every day. So I think that having this staff reserve available is going to be imperative. The fuel, electricity, paper inflation is just the cost of doing business, but is also a very good reason for us to be looking at ways to conserve and reorient our use of these resources. Our cost-share item on electric buses is a good example of this. As our food and nutrition program adapts to a return to more normal operations, we must continue our annual upgrades of their equipment. In addition, we have made decisions to fund other items of high interest. Safety and security in our schools is a huge imperative, and the need for a periodic third-party review of our work is just good business. So I'm very pleased to see that we will get this underway ASAP. Employee bonuses. Workforce needs, in my opinion, need to be our highest priority now and moving forward. We are in a business that requires huge investments in human capital, and as the entire world looks at changing workforce trends, we need to be right in the middle of these discussions and on the forefront of changes to ensure that we maintain a strong workforce, to ensure the continued success and academic achievement of our students. The employee bonus is just a down payment on this, and I include the recruitment incentive for substitutes in here as well. To support our athletic programs, which are so important to so many of our students, we are partnering with the Board of Supervisors to provide stadium bathrooms at high schools that do not have them. This is a strategic investment in our overall county ability to provide athletic facilities. We are also upgrading softball fields for our women's programs and improving outdated turf fields. A few other items, we are supporting our young scholars program with funds for materials in need to further help these young learners advance to their full potential. Continuing our pipeline of advanced learners is a priority I have been vocally supportive of over the years. A number of board members are interested in middle school start times and changes, and we are funding a study to look at creative ways to implement this with minimal cost. I'm also excited to have the set aside of $3 million to be available for new items that Dr. Reed deems necessary as she takes a look at our organization. She has already asked for a full review of our hiring processes around background checks and communications with police departments, and I am sure we will see additional needs as the year progresses. And we are just in the development phases of our FY24 budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chair Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan for their hard work on the budget this past year, also Ms. Wiggington and Assistant Superintendent Burden. I just want to highlight one little piece of this, this investment tonight. If you look at Item E, and we talk about electricity inflation, we're going to be spending $4.7 million because, in additional expenses because of electricity inflation. And I raise that because the work that FCPS has done over the years to conserve energy saves us $8 million a year. And so when we see investments like the $1 million in our side of electric bus purchases, by the way, we'll have 28 by the end of spring, which is exciting. Yes, it's good for the environment. Our kids will be on buses that they're not breathing diesel exhaust, they're quieter, there's less noise pollution, et cetera. There are a lot of benefits. But as a school division, we have a fiduciary responsibility to invest our dollars wisely. And when we invest in these green technologies, when we do better with conservation, when we transition away from diesel and other dirtier fuels, we save money, and that's money that can go directly back into the classroom, as we've been doing for years now. So I appreciate all the work that's been done on these year-end expenses, and also appreciate all of the work of my colleagues who came to consensus on this. It was not easy, but these investments are very much needed. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Kees Gamarra?
Thank you. Thank you. I too thank my colleagues and Ms. Burden's shop for this presentation and all the hard work we've had over the past year with clarity to understand where we're moving and working hard to make sure the community understands why we're investing where we're investing. I was a little struck by the electricity inflation number, but I know that's, that's a reality that we can't necessarily control, along with the fuel inflation. Those were the two, a little sticker shock there for me. But I do want to applaud the sub-recruitment investment here, because I think there is a real focus on, there is a real focus on making sure we have top-class folks working in our, in our classrooms in order to achieve student success. I did have one, one question, and perhaps this isn't where it would typically be, but I don't see a category for continuing costs for collective bargaining. Is that something, would that typically be in here, Ms. Burden?
And the fiscal current fiscal, fiscal '23 approved budget included some funding for positions to support collective bargaining, but we, we've not allocated anything additional. bargaining, but we've not allocated anything additional for that.
Okay. So I just didn't, so we send the right message. We heard a lot of people today testifying about that concern, but that is something that we are allocating funds for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you so much. I do want to echo the sentiments of thanks to the budget team and also Ms. Burden and her team. I did have a few questions, because I think our community's been looking at these very closely, and there are some outstanding questions that I want to get some responses to. Very excited about the recruitment bonuses for employees and to get more substitutes. But I think there was a question regarding the date of distribution. If the Board passes this budget this evening, Ms. Burden, when should employees expect those bonuses as identified in Item A? And the second part of that is, do we have any employee groups that are not going to be receiving it? I know that there's a demarcation for contracted and hourly employees.
Currently, we're planning on following the same timeline that we did with last year's bonus, which means that it will be paid out at the end of November. We are still working with the HR department to determine the appropriate threshold for hourly employees. All FTEs and hourly contracted employees, like bus drivers, parent liaisons, and food services, will receive the $1,000. Hourly, non-contracted employees will receive 500, but we are still working on what the appropriate threshold is to be eligible for that bonus.
Thank you so much. I know that's going to have significant impact on our bus drivers, particularly as hourly employees. I also had a question regarding Item C, the stadium restrooms. Again, very excited. None of the schools in Mason District have stadium restrooms, and this has been an issue. In the document that was provided to us, Dr. Reed, I believe, on Monday, it said that there were two options of prefab versus brick-and-mortar. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Frencher in terms of, what are the pros and cons of these two options?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. Both are, I guess really, it's the one we can get quicker is the prefabricated, still a very serviceable and maintainable unit. It takes longer to go through the permitting and construction process for a brick-and-mortar facility.
Would it look the same? Is it same cost, same quality?
Yes. I mean, it is. And I think they'll look good, they will match their surroundings, so it won't look like it's out of place.
Okay. Thank you. And the other piece that I noticed in that document, it says that the FCPS fund source would be school bond. I thought we were using year-end funds for that. That confused me a little bit. It's at the bottom of that one pager.
Yeah, Dr. Anderson, I believe that's coming out of the construction fund, because it's being funded with state construction dollars. And so those funds do not go in the operating fund, they go in the construction fund, and that is on Page 8, I think, in your document, the board item.
Thank you. I was just referring to these one pagers that we got, and that's why I think I was confused, because I'm thinking maybe there's an error on this one pager, and that's what you're confirming?
I see the bullet that you're talking about here. That is an error, and we will correct that.
Super. I appreciate that. Also, I had some questions regarding Falls Church. Again, all of this is based on these documents, which we did not have too much earlier, but it's perfect timing, because they're very quick. So I'm taking the time to ask my inquiries now. Falls Church High School, which is undergoing renovation, I did not see where they were included for the stadium bathrooms, but they were included for the softball field. I would think that the renovation included both of these, but please confirm that the stadium bathrooms will be included in the Falls Church renovation, but the softball field is a separate and will come out of this, these funding. I think it's, is that year-end or school construction? I don't remember.
Yes. Sorry.
Dr. Anderson, so we are transferring $1.5 million to the school construction fund, so the costs and the accounting for the softball fields will reside there. The stadium restrooms are separate. The operating fund is contributing $7.5 million. And just as a reminder for the board, the county is also giving $7.5 million for, I believe it was the 15 bathrooms.
Right. And I think that's my question. On the list of 15 schools, Falls Church High School was not included for the stadium bathrooms.
That's correct. The stadium bathroom is in the renovation.
Thank you. But then their softball field will be out of this year-end, just like all the other schools? And that's not part of the renovation?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Lastly, I was also very excited about the recruitment incentives for substitutes. I thought these were very interesting and creative ways to get our substitutes into the building. I particularly appreciated the focus on those hard-to-fill days, which are Fridays. They always are. So thank you for being so intentional about making sure that we can have sub-days available in having that recruitment, as well as your second part of the initiative, which is the recruitment, I'm sorry, which is the incentive for days' work. I think that's really going to go a long way for our folks. I'm super appreciative of the substitute recruitment. I would love for us, this may not be the time, but at some other point, to talk a little bit more intentionally about the recruitment for teachers. I've mentioned this before, hard-to-staff positions, such as special education teachers, really retaining our staff in Title I schools, where we tend to have, well, more turnover than in other places. And also, going back to have those conversations, we're recruiting teachers that look like our students. I know the conversation to recruit male teachers of color has been a discussion with our previous superintendent. I would love to get a sense of where we are on those discussions, just to get an update, Dr. Reed.
It's my understanding that Mr. Smith and the HR team are working on data collection to look at options for contracting with partner agencies and organizations to achieve that goal.
Oh, wonderful. So we look forward to having that discussion with you all sometime soon?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And also, not to put you on the spot, but I'm very curious if you have given any thought yet regarding the superintendent reserve?
I'm still thinking. It's early in the year.
There's just so much. To narrow it down, we'll be a lot to ask. I want to make sure I ask all my questions here. Answered that one. Oh, and also, one last question that was raised to me, that I wanted to be sure that I received an answer from my constituent. Very excited about our focus on ensuring that we have sensory rooms in our schools. But I think the inquiry was, it's $250,000 for one room. Can you give us a sense of what that would mean? Because that's what's in the budget for Burke School. Because it also shared that the equipment would be procured in another way, or using other funds.
So when you look at the line item for sensory rooms, that we do have a much smaller estimate for Burke School alone, and then with those additional funds, we would be looking at using the Burke model, excuse me, I'll get a little closer, using the Burke model for sensory rooms in other schools, and using those funds to be able to put sensory rooms in other buildings. So we're not looking at spending all $250,000 on one sensory room at Burke.
Oh, okay. So the first 40 is for that room, but the 250 is for multiple spaces throughout the division?
Correct. We will use the Burke as a sort of pilot or proof of concept, and then see where we can put sensory rooms in other schools.
Thank you. That very much clarifies things. Just lastly, I just want to say I'm super excited that we're going to begin this conversation on the middle school start time, not begin, really pick up, because we've had this conversation before. And I would really, I'm very curious to see what we can receive from this outside independent kind of consultant to help us work through this very difficult issue, because transportation, staffing for bus drivers is a real issue, and all of us are highly invested in that middle school start time adjustment as soon as possible. So very excited that that's present, and I know my community is very interested in doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. With that, I see no one else wishing to speak, so I just want to say a quick thank you so much to our outgoing budget chair, oh, I apologize, Ms. Darnat-Kofax, my apologies.
No worries. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to support this year-end budget. I do want to thank Lee Burden and your team, and I want to say congratulations on the well-deserved honor that you all received. Thank you, and congratulations. As noted by Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Tolan, the funding here came through thoughtful processes throughout the year. We are fortunate to find ourselves here with this year-end funding. We had conversation with staff, community members, and through our own conversations. Many of the things, such as stadium bathrooms, have been needed but not been able to be funded before, so this is really good to see this. Other items, though, that are smaller in dollar amounts can have truly big equity impacts, specifically the ability for more schools to fund after-school programs, such as LEGO Robotics, and giving us more intentional support for our young scholars program. I too am excited to see the study about middle school start times. I was on the board, and I was the chair when we were able to pass high school start times. It was always our intent to continue to do this for the middle school, and I'm hopeful we are very close to doing that. Thank you all again for your hard work, budget team, Elaine, and Karen, and again, staff.
Thank you, Ms. Darnat-Kofax, and I apologize, that's why I'm not looking at my notebook. I just want to take just a brief moment to thank our outgoing budget chair, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Tolan for your incredible hard work and partnership, and this wonderful budget that we have that's funding so many priorities to really, to reach the needs of some of our most needy students, including translators and interpreters for our students, as well as additional support for our special education teachers, because we know how difficult it is to recruit and retain our teachers. We want to provide them that extra support that they need. Our sensory rooms, there's just so much good stuff in here. And I would just say, as a, you know, just-finished Lake Braddock parent, which is the largest high school in Virginia, and has no stadium bathroom, I'm actually really thrilled about that. I know Ms. Cohen is sharing that excitement with me, as was Ms. McLaughlin. So I just want to thank also Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington for your hard work. I'm very excited about this, and just thank you very much for everything you've done to get us to this point. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor? The motion before us is on the screen. Ms. Mady, if you could put the motion up. Thank you. All those in favor? That is Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Darnat-Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omech, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and I don't see, and Ms. McLaughlin, and myself. That is unanimous with Ms. Marin away from the table. Great job. Agenda item 4.03, School Board Liaison and Committee Assignments. I call on Ms. Cohen for the motion.
I move that the school board confirm committee liaison and assignments as detailed in the agenda item.
I'm so sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Cohen, would you like to designate someone else to speak to your motion? Or would you like to speak to it?
Oh, I just wanted to take a second to say thank you. I know that these are not easy, and none of us are always all the way satisfied every year, and I know that it takes a lot of work that you two put in to try to put people in the best spots for them to be successful. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Ms. Bukarski, would I just speak to your second?
Yeah. I'll just say, ditto that. It is difficult to do these, but there's a lot of work that the board does outside of these regular meetings and work sessions, and I, for one, am excited to try new things this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara, did you wish to speak? Your light was on. Thank you. Seeing no other board members who wish to speak, I will call for the vote. The motion before us is on the screen. All those in favor? Ms. Sezmerizer?
I'm sorry, did you just?
Yeah.
And I appreciate all the work that's gone into these appointments. Obviously, there, as Ms. Bukarski outlined, there's so much work to be done, and behind the scenes, we spend hours and hours and hours doing this work, because it's necessary and with great joy. And I certainly didn't want to be in this situation, and I hope this doesn't turn into a back-and-forth, and I hope I'm not misunderstood, but I hope that my colleagues can appreciate that I feel compelled to share, because it otherwise feels like being stepped all over repeatedly, keeping a smile on my face. And again, I do thank everybody for being a part of this, because this is always complicated. Nobody walks away with everything they want. Nobody walks away getting the appointments they're most interested in. And at the end of the day, we assume the responsibilities that are assigned ultimately imposed on us, but because we understand the importance of this work, and our commitment always is to the kids, and that's why we show up, and we continue to show up, and we have a commitment to it. And so this is, I'm not coming at this with just sour grapes. I'm identifying the challenge that, for the fourth go at this consistently, I am the single board member who has not received a single leadership opportunity nor my preferences in this process. And I say that not to spotlight myself. I'm going to show up, and I'm going to do this work, just like I have every year. And my commitment and my competence certainly in this work has spoken for itself, and the record speaks for that. Certainly being the chair of a previous board advisory committee before being on this board, presenting to the school board in various capacities before that. But I say it because we're a division that claims to continue wanting to invest in our young people, and that claims our values of wanting to raise a generation that will come back to serve, and come back to buy into the FCPS promise, the FCPS mission, and to want to improve the system. And we have a student rep who consistently reminds us of that student voice. And so it's important to me that we're consistent. And I've pondered, I've asked questions, I've never been given a good answer. And so I won't call it ageism, because I don't want to resort to that, but it sure feels like it. And I hope that we can be reflective. I'm going to continue, again, showing up and doing my role to improve this system, but this is a system of cultivating young leaders and believing that people with different perspectives add value, and that we have blind spots at times that we need to reflect upon. So I'm sorry to make this a scene. I've bitten my tongue three, four times, but I really believe in the importance of being self-reflective of that across the division, because it's what we're promising our own kids, and it's what we're preaching to them, to stand up, to be leaders, to come back, to serve. And I have no other answers, but I appreciate the work that's been done. Again, and I will be showing up and being present and continuing to fight for our kids in the various roles that have been assigned, despite them not being any of my preferences. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Omech. If no one else wishes to speak, Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Just briefly, I do appreciate Ms. Omech's impassioned plea, and I just, I hope that our board will hear this as a call to further discussion. I think we've done a lot of work to try to make sure that we're working together, and we've made a lot of progress. But maybe this is one of those areas where we really need to come to the table and try to make sure that we're hearing one another. So I know that was difficult to say, Ms. Omech, and I just, I, for one, am happy to meet everybody at the table. So thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, I hope the board and the audience can hear me okay.
We can hear you.
Wonderful. I do want to convey my appreciation for Ms. Omech's honesty this evening, but I did want to speak as the longest-serving board member, along with Ms. Kofax, about any concerns that there may be ageism or any kind of prejudice or bias in how board members are given opportunity. In my 11 years, I have never served as a vice chair or chair of this board. It took me probably more than one term before I was It took me probably more than one term before I was given an opportunity even be a chair of a committee, and it's not always easy when that happens, but I want to speak to this board. I'm really proud, serving alongside on this board, that I have seen such an effort to really respect the 12 of us as best as possible, recognizing our time commitments, our ability to step on and take more work in all capacities. And so, Ms. Omeish, I'm sorry that tonight you're feeling that there has been a bias in how you've been able to help contribute to the board. I think that all of us want to ensure that we can have those honest conversations, but, you know, even again, being such a senior member, one may look at my leadership over the last three years, and it's not always reflected that way, but I don't take it personally. I just try to really make sure for, again, our public and each other that, you know, we work toward building strong relationships with another, but it concerned me tonight that the public might walk away if no one says anything that we're okay, or that we condone, or we agree, that there's some sort of prejudice going on this evening with our appointments, and I for one want to assure everyone watching tonight or otherwise that I really greatly appreciate our board's efforts to, every day, try and respect and do the best we can with one another, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Dr. Anderson?
Yes, very briefly, I want to thank Ms. Omeish for her statements, and I just wanted to echo what Ms. Keys-Gamara shared. Clearly, there's some communication that we can be having as a board, and I'm hoping that this is an opportunity to really compel us to have those discussions, because in no way do we want for any one of our board members to feel the way that Ms. Omeish is feeling this evening, and I think there's some space there for some discussions and some clarifications, and I'm hoping we take advantage of that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Seeing no other speakers, I'll call for the vote. I see the motion before us is on the screen. All those in favor? That is Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Darnatt Kofax, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and Ms. McLaughlin, with Ms., all those opposed? Ms. Omeish? That motion passes with Ms. Marin away from the table. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes.
Would you like to be recognized?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to be recognized. As you know, we've been having a sidebar conversation about whether I should ask without objection if we can move item 6.08 from new business to action tonight. That is the action item that we discussed on Tuesday, which we, which is giving instruction to the superintendent to begin the process of building a plan for engaging the public in the renewal of a strategic plan for this system, rather than as a-
Ms. Corbett Sanders, without, I don't know if we have an explanation we need to-
So, my question is, before I ask that, if I can just ask Dr. Reed whether she can begin that work, and then I will not ask for the, without objection.
Dr. Reed, our typical process is to post on new business for the community to see-
Right.
...the action, and then take action two weeks later. Will that stop you from doing the work of working on this treaty plan that we talked about as we wait for the-
Of the project plan.
Of the project plan.
It will not stop me from doing the work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Corbett Sanders? Agenda item five, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from current, from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item six, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business items are on the screen. Agenda item seven, Board Committee Reports. The next item on the agenda is Board Committee Reports, and I call on Ms. Tolan for an update from the Skip Committee.
Thank you. Dahlia Pelczek, Supervisor from the Providence District, and I participated in two, two-hour roundtables this summer with county and FCPS staff and private service providers, in order to give input to staff developing a multi-year blueprint for our overall county needs, and I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on the fact that those roundtables happened over the summer, and, you know, where we're going from here. The goals of the roundtables were outlined as follows. Increasing awareness among key stakeholders of current issues related to and efforts to address youth behavioral health in Fairfax County. Number two, identify and gain support for ways in which organizations and sectors across Fairfax County can all work together to contribute to these efforts, and to identify strategies to amplify and broaden these efforts to address system-wide gaps and weaknesses. And lastly, to identify potential legislative initiatives to recommend that the board consider to address youth behavioral issues in Fairfax County. Dr. Michelle Boyd participated in these meetings along with Stefan Meskal and Mike Axler as our FCPS staff representatives. The big takeaways that I had, just very overarching, I'll share with you tonight, and I'll send this report to each of you through email so that you have that list of goals. The big takeaways were really that, you know, of course, our needs, no surprise, are acute and immediate, particularly around substance abuse, and ways to catch children early that are having difficulties, so that their issues do not escalate into severe problems. We have a serious shortage of resources publicly and privately available to work with these children and families, and really need to work at, look at how we strengthen our tier-one supports. The providers we do have in all sectors are doing incredible work, but they are overwhelmed. Number two, money alone will not solve these problems. We must be creative in our solutions and our use of funds. For example, some of the things that are ongoing, training pediatricians to see early signs of mental health problems, growing our own programs for psychologists and counselors, perhaps looking at a partnership with GMU to do some of this work. FCPS was generous in our budget this past year to try to attack some of these issues, and staff is still struggling to find qualified people for all of these positions. And number three, we must work closely with our partners to craft a state and federal legislative agenda this fall, so we'll look forward to working with Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. Frisch on this, to work with our state and federal delegation to further things, like, just an example, being able to have neighboring state-certified health specialists work in Virginia. Right now, they can't do that. Our county staff is preparing a report to the Board of Supervisors on the results of the roundtable discussions, and I will, it should be done by early October, I'll get it to all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan? Agenda item, Ms. Corbett Sanders, this is Board Committee Reports. Did you have a committee report? We don't generally ask questions at this part, but you're welcome to ask a question if you like. All right.
Ms. Tolan, thank you so much for your dedication to this work and the work that you did over the summer. One of the areas I see that you've put together a list of areas where we need joint action, something that I would encourage you to add to that list, is the availability of inpatient beds to support students or children with substance abuse issues. It came to my attention recently that there is not a single facility within Fairfax County that provides those services for inpatient, and so it is critical that we actually have a focus on that. And something else that we have talked about in the past that I would urge that gets added to the list, which is, in the state of Virginia, a child who is 14 years old or older who decides that they don't want to accept substance abuse counseling or support is able to make that decision, and I really think that as we talk about the importance of partnering, that we do something to address that concern, because we obviously want to make sure that we provide those supports to every child who may be attracted to or may be addicted to drugs, because the real challenge today is that oftentimes they think that they're taking one drug and it's actually another, and that something like 90% of the overdoses are linked to fentanyl. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Agenda item eight, Board Matters. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Bukarski.
All right, thank you. I hope everyone had a wonderful start to the school year. My kids did. Was all very excited to see them go back to school, and I was able to visit London Town with Dr. Reed, so that was nice, to bring her out to my neck of the woods to see the wonderful things happening, and we also had a wonderful community conversation last night at Chantilly that was, that had a great turnout, so thank you to everyone who came, and of course, thank you to all the teachers and administrators, bus, you know, drivers, and everyone who really made the last two weeks a success. I know I shared with a few of you that I went to the pool last weekend with my kids, and I had many parents and teachers actually coming up to me and just saying, it really feels like we're back into a normal, regular groove, so that was, it was great to hear, and I know there's lots of good work happening this year. I'm looking forward, you know, I've been going to back-to-school nights, looking forward to continuing that. I've been able to go to a football game and some other sports activities to see our students. We have a grand opening of the new Sully District Community Center on September 17th, and they have a wonderful program that day. It is very exciting for my district, so I hope community members will come out, bring their kids, and see this new facility that the county has been able to provide for our community. I'm very excited, and of course, I'll be there with my own kids. I do have office hours this month, and that, the details for that are in my newsletter, so if you're not signed up for that, please go to the FCPS School Board website and sign up. I would love to talk to you, and I'd just say, you know, to anyone in the community, when you see me out and about, back-to-school nights, or just, you know, sports activities that may, I may happen to be at with my kids, or any other activities, please come up and introduce yourself. I love meeting people, and I love chatting with all of you and hearing your ideas and your experiences, and it's often at those odd events, when I'm at a swim meet or something with my own kids, that I have really some of the best, most in-depth, and really helpful conversations with our families, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm looking forward to another wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Cohen?
Just wanted to say that it's been such a great start to the school year, and I was really excited to get to kick off the first day of school at Lake Braddock with Dr. Reed and Ms. Seismarizer, and my children did let me go get a selfie with them, so I felt like it was a winning mom moment with teenagers. And Sangster, I so appreciated being invited to get to not only welcome all the Sangster families back, but get to help some of our kindergarteners find their classroom on their first day, and definitely starting that day with my senior walking out the door, getting to shepherd some kindergarteners into their classrooms was, man, it was like a real gut check about our journey in FCPS. And I also want to say thank you to Cardinal Forrest and Irving, and then again to Key Center and Lake Braddock for hosting Dr. Reed's town halls. I look forward to the next one that I'll get to join you at at West Springfield, and I so appreciate everybody who's taken the time to come out to those. I know that it is really hard, especially at this time of year, to be able to extend yourself and do, go the extra mile, but I was so pleased at our, my home school, our base school, at the number of people who showed up, and at Key Center, the number of folks who were able to come out and who brought their children, especially under some extraordinary medical circumstances for some of their kids. It was incredible to hear their story and get to be with them, so I'm really looking forward to getting my voice back and, and the next few weeks of school, and I will just say, I'm hoping that the Bruins are up. I'm getting texts from my husband with the Lake Braddock football score, so go Bruins.
That sounded painful. So, last week I had the opportunity to welcome Dr. Reed to Kilmer Middle School and Kilmer Center. We were able to step into a few classrooms, sit down and chat with some students, and we also had an opportunity to join some new seventh graders at lunch, which was very enlightening. They said things were going well. They were a little shaky on moving from classroom to classroom, but they were getting the hang of it only halfway through the day. We also had an opportunity to visit with the cafeteria staff as they were preparing eminently to get food into the lines for our students, and perhaps the highlight of the day, going to Kilmer Center and having a student in an art class take a photo of us with assistive technology, so I want to give a shout-out to Manny for the great photo. If you want to see it, you can check it out on Kilmer Center's Twitter account. It turned out really great, and we're all very proud of him. And after kicking off the first week of school, Ms. Tolan and I took a field trip across state lines to Maryland, and visited Montgomery County's Bus Depot in Bethesda, where they're moving very, very quickly to transition their almost-as-large bus fleet as ours, with no additional cost to them. They will be upwards of 300 electric buses at the end of next year. They will have all 1,400 of their buses replaced with electric alternatives in a dozen years. So, I look forward to sharing with my colleagues how they've done that, and it should lead to some enlightening conversations. But it was great, their electric buses are just like our electric buses. They're super quiet, they ride smoothly, they don't have diesel air pollution coming in, and the kids there call them Tesla buses, too. And in closing, I just want to say, it's been great seeing students back in the classroom, teachers back in the classroom, staff back in our buildings. Looking forward to the superintendent's community conversation at McLean next week, and at Falls Church the week after. And as we wrap up this second week of school, I just want to wish all of my colleagues a Happy Labor Day, and all of our families at home a Happy Labor Day as well.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson, then Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. It's been very exciting to see all the students back in the school buildings. I've been very excited for mine to return back to the school buildings. They're excited to learn, excited to reconnect with their friends. The start of the school year is always awesome. It always has marked my calendar, and so I love to be able to continue to be part of that tradition. The open houses, the back-to-school night, football games, all of the things my colleagues have previously said are really, have really marked the excitement around returning back to our buildings. Our students so far in Mason District have had a wonderful start to the year, and they're ready to dive- ready to dive into their studies and to recoup learning losses that we know that they're still working on, under the very capable tutelage of their teachers. I do want to say, welcome to Timberlane Elementary. Parts about 20% of Timberlane is now in the Mason District due to the redistricting that just took place, and I'm excited to get to know that community and to visit your schools very soon. To the parents of Annandale Terrace and Luther Jackson, I know you're waiting with bated breath to have the announcements of your principals, and that is coming very soon. And I'm excited to be at Annandale Terrace next Tuesday for that announcement, and Luther Jackson is coming very soon. I also want to thank the parents and families who came to Glasgow last week to come to a very short, noticed meeting with Dr. Reed and myself, and Ms. Marin was also in attendance to speak about the concerns that have been happening. And as Dr. Reed shared in that meeting, a full review is underway, and she has committed to returning to our community about the findings once that's been completed. And I know we have work to do in this area, and I will actually articulate some of the things that Dr. Reed talked about, which is ensuring that we have a system of checks and balances and a broad sense of accountability. And I know this is what the community is looking for us to deliver, and I believe we're up to the task in ensuring that we are increasing the confidence of our parents in our schools, because if we don't have that, it makes the work that much harder. I also want to remind folks that the community conversations coming up with Dr. Reed, Falls Church, is actually here at Luther Jackson, and not at Falls Church. They're busy with renovation. The space is not conducive, and so that will be happening here on September 13th, so please be sure to join us and to register on the FCPS website. And we will be having the Justice High School and the Annandale High School Community Meetings on November 21st and 29th respectively, so we have a little bit of time. I hope everyone has a wonderful, long weekend, and Happy Labor Day to all.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I'm not sure if, I know you're having some connectivity issues. Are you there? All right, we'll come back to Ms. McLaughlin if she's able to connect. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Joy. That is how I would describe every conversation I have had with students, teachers, parents. Joy. They are so joyous, because as Ms. Pikarski said, we are back, and we have this semblance of normalcy, and our students are learning and thriving, and we know that there's going to be lots of good things happening in our schools. It already is in just the eight days that we've had so far, or nine days that we've had so far. So, thank you, Dr. Reed. Thank you to all of our teachers, our IAs, our food service, and our ultimate ambassadors being our bus drivers, who are the first to see our children as they start their school day, and the last to see our children as they joyfully jump off the bus, and hopefully are sharing great things that have been happening with their, in school with their families. I want to send a special shout out to our facilities folks, not only for the incredible work they do to make sure that all of our buildings are ready for opening, but I want to thank them for the Herculean task that they have undertaken to make sure that those buildings that were under renovation were ready to accept students. They may not have been fully completed, but they have done amazing things, especially at Washington Mill and at West Potomac, where our students are truly enjoying the new classrooms that they are having their math and sciences in. So, thank you very much. And finally, I do want to urge everybody to participate in our upcoming town halls. The ones for, where Mount Vernon students attend in Region 3 but are not located in Region 3 are Hayfield on the 12th of September, Edison on the 14th of September, and on the 3rd of October, I'm pleased that Dr. Reed will be coming to the Mount Vernon Magisterial District with a visit to Mount Vernon, and then to West Potomac on the 27th, and back over to my colleagues in Franconia with Lewis on the 10th, as well as our South County Pyramid on the 21st of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Tolan?
So, I have had a wonderful time visiting the Drainsville Schools for a wide variety of Welcome Back School Events, cookouts, back-to-school nights, resource fairs, and just general school visits. And I've been, like Ms. Corbett Sanders, wowed by the excitement across the school community. Staff, students, and families are so excited to be back. In every event that I attended, the administration was seeing a record attendance. Thank you so much to everyone who helps make our first days back to school a success, our bus drivers, our teachers, our nutritional staff, our custodians, and more. And I do know also that our construction staff was working day and night at Cooper Middle School to get them ready to open for school this year. I'm looking forward to seeing people in Drainsville at a school visit next week or throughout the fall. Please make sure to join Dr. Reed, a continuing theme here, on her superintendent community conversations. She's coming out to all of the high school pyramids to learn about our communities and to learn what your priorities are, so please make a point to attend. The meetings are for all schools within the high school pyramid, elementary, middle, and high schools, and translation services and childcare are available when you register. Please see my newsletter for the Drainsville High School Pyramid dates, and look for your school's emails to register. And I do hope, as Mr. Frisch mentioned, to see all of you at the McLean High School meeting next week on September 8th. I would like to point out that tonight was a very good night for McLean High School. We passed several key improvements, including bathroom renovations. We have a continued roof replacement on new business, so that'll be coming up shortly. Stadium bathrooms, girls' softball field upgrades, et cetera. He has taken off for the evening, but I wanted to give a huge thank you to Chuck Mancha, our interim assistant superintendent for facilities and transportation, and Justin Moss, our director of facilities and maintenance, for visiting McLean High School with me yesterday to see firsthand some of the building issues we're struggling with, and I look forward to continued efforts with them. We are having a few bus issues in Drainsville, but there's improvement each day, and I've been tracking this with principals and transportation. Please keep letting us know if you are having issues with your buses. Congratulations to McLean High School graduate Max Feinberg for making it to the American Ninja Warriors, Stage 2 of the finals. He's the farthest he has ever been. Way to go, Max. And go Cooper Cougars. Dr. Reed mentioned them with their incredible work in music. We will hear them in person on our October 6th meeting. Have a great weekend, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Amash?
All right. I want to start off by thanking all our staff for an incredible start to the school year. I've certainly heard a lot of happiness and excitement for what was a successful time as Dr. Reed has outlined. With so many successes, 97% of our buses being on time is just the start of it, but really, and a congratulations to Dr. Reed as well for starting off successfully with her first year with us here. Which brings me to the next point of, on Tuesday, we had some really great discussions around what the vision will be for where our division is headed, and I want to make sure the public is aware and following some of those conversations so that your input can be incorporated as we go along. I know Dr. Reed is attentively listening to many, many people over the past week and coming weeks, and had the, you know, privilege of hearing some of those conversations, just at the SEPTA one the other night, and of course, we have many, many more scheduled. But I say that to say that that's initial conversations, to inform her, of course, of what the concerns are, but it seems like from Tuesday that we're going to be starting a strategic plan process from the beginning, and that's how our board seems to want to move forward. So, with that in mind, be sure to keep a flag up and look for when we start talking about the development of that process, to make sure that your voices are included in that. And then finally, as we turn this page of new beginnings, I didn't comment on the year-end piece earlier, but just want to kind of flag, as we continue to think about budgeting, I know I had a conversation with Ms. Corbett Sanders earlier today about how we can incorporate some of this in our legislative advocacy, but perhaps just considering, hopefully, a bit of a philosophical shift, where on the equity issues and in reaching those families who we've maybe done the poorest job of reaching, rather than perhaps deciding what programs are good for them and continuing to fund those, supporting translation interpretation services so that we can empower those families to speak up for themselves and not assume that they just are disinterested or don't care because we don't hear from them. So, I'm hoping that my colleagues can join us in further investing in translation interpretation services. I know the projection for that from our previous budget conversations in May and June neared a billion dollars in terms of what the need is and what our deficiencies are, so no matter how much we spend, we're still falling short. So, hopefully, we can all commit to that in this coming year. But thank you all, and let's have a blessed year.
Thank you. Ms. Kies-Gamara?
Yes. I want to take a couple of different directions here. One, of course, I feel the excitement of the year. I think the start of the school year is the most wonderful time of year, second only to the holiday of your choice, but, and I think every, there's a lot of parents that do a little happy dance when they see that bus come, and when I see them now, I do it for those who still have children in school. But as I was thinking about sharing today, I came across this quote from Leonardo da Vinci that said, "Learning is the only thing the mind never exhausts, never fears, or never regrets." And I just, when I came across that, I thought, that's why we're happy, because learning is a real opportunity, and I'm just grateful that all of us are joined in those efforts with community and parents and so many others that care so much, because that is truly the great value that we have and get to enjoy together as we endeavor to make sure that learning is happening in a healthy way. I, too, got an opportunity to be involved in some of the first-day visits with Dr. Reed, had some back-to-school moments, really enjoyed being at Cunningham Park, where a number of teachers were set up to greet folks and show their wares. It was, it was quite exciting. I had the opportunity to be at First Baptist Church of Vienna with Dr. Reed. I didn't know she was going to be there, but it was really quite neat to see such an institution point out the importance of sending our children and entrusting our children to our schools, and so I was happy to be there, and of course, enjoyed being with SEPTA and a few other things. But I'd like to end by acknowledging one of the icons, heroes of FCPS. We had an opportunity to recognize Dr. Larry Bussie just a few years ago, who died suddenly, who has served our community, I'm not quite sure how many decades, I think four. And so, I wanted to again say thank you to him for contributing so much, for challenging us in so many ways, and for his family who graciously lent him to us for that purpose of learning that Mr. Da Vinci spoke about. So, thank you. I hope we all have a great year, and good night, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Darnakovacs?
Thank you. I, Happy New School Year, everyone. I, too, was thrilled to join Dr. Reed and Principal Kunin at Forest Hill with the Falcon Families, Forest Hill Elementary, that is. There were lots of hugs to go all around. You could see the joy, the children, the little hugs around their knees. We were even getting them. They were so cute as we were standing there welcoming them to school with all of the teachers that they recognized and loved, and so thank you for that, and I was just happy to be there. I was also happy to join Dr. Reed at her second community conversation at Key Center for Special Education Families. This parent group was candid, they were personal about what the FCPS has done for some of our neediest children, and while improvements can be made, there was much gratitude expressed for the staffs of Key, Kilmer, and our other special education centers, and how they are assisting these families, not only provide educational opportunities for their children, but provide lots of love and care for these families. I look forward to seeing more families at upcoming back-to-school nights, as well as the community meetings. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, for announcing those dates, so I don't have to do that. And Happy Labor Day to everybody. Enjoy this last official weekend of summer.
Great. I know I, it is quite early, but I promise I won't talk long to make up for it. I know I stand between you all and your bed. I just wanted to also say Happy New School Year. I was very, very excited to join Dr. Reed and Ms. Cohen at Lake Braddock, very bright and early, with the marching band and the cheerleaders and the Student Government Association and the dance team. It was a really festive atmosphere and kicked off the school year well, and it was even meaningful, because when I walked back into my neighborhood, I saw all the young ones, the little kindergartners and first graders getting on their bus, and, you know, the little ones with their backpacks were almost bigger than they were, you know, and it was just a really nice sort of yin and yang of seeing the high schoolers and middle schoolers excited to come back, and then the little ones getting on the school bus for the first time to go to school. So, just the excitement is in the air. You can see it with our teachers, you can see it with our students. There's just exciting learning happening. There's exciting connections happening with football games and marching band and clubs and activities and theater. It is just really, really awesome to see. I also enjoyed being able to go to the first, I think, of Dr. Reed's community conversations at TJ, and listening to the families over at TJ and kind of hearing their thoughts and concerns, as well as going to the Special Ed PTA meeting where Dr. Reed also spoke. And I look forward to going to many more community conversations and maybe a football game or two. And I just wanted to throw out for all those families who have their kids back in school, I hope that your hopes and joys for your children are realized this year. I hope there's lots of amazing learning that happens in and outside of the classroom, and please know that we are all here to partner with you. Please let us know how we can serve you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.